Good morning, everyone, to our regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting. My name is Councilmember Andrew Johnson. It's August 17th, and we have quorum of the committee today with Councilmembers Gordon, Council President Barb Johnson, Councilmember Quincy, Worsami, Frye, and Paul Masano. We also have several councilmembers out today that are actually working on business on behalf of the city specific to the efforts around the Orange Line BRT route, and that is Council Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Bender, Councilmember Kano, and Councilmember Reich. I wanted to acknowledge their work, which we are grateful for today. We do have two items on the agenda, a postponed item and our reports of committees. The first item is our Creative City Roadmap presented by the City Coordinator's Office.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmembers. Good morning, Chair. My name is Gilgun Keem. I'm the Director of Arts, Culture, Creative Economy, and I work in the City Coordinator's Office. I'm here today to discuss and seek approval for the Creative City Roadmap document. Before diving into the report itself, I want to provide some background on the purpose, the stakeholders and audience for this document. Past cultural plans for the city have outlined visions for clear, efficient, and orderly creative sector development in 10-year increments, the standard timeline for municipal plans. These efforts have helped to strengthen the foundation of the local creative ecosystem. Most recently, the 2005 Plan for Arts and Culture led the way to strengthen the city's policies, arts policies and programs. Through a growing body of research, we know that the arts are an important aspect of living and working in Minneapolis. Cultural offerings in our city are abundant, greatly improving our quality of life and significantly contributing to our local economy. Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy research has repeatedly shown that Minneapolis is an arts and culture powerhouse of our region and state. Thus, when we began considering how to approach this particular cultural planning process, we asked the question, is everyone benefiting from the abundance that is here? As a result, our planning work focused on researching, understanding, and surfacing the present creative identity of Minneapolis and envisioning a future where all Minneapolitans can access and benefit from the creative economy. The Creative City Roadmap is above all a strategic document focused on alignment between the community and government. As a community-wide plan, it acknowledges the roles played by different stakeholders in the creative sector and provides high-level guidelines for city government to play a part in the local creative ecosystem. As the Creative City Roadmap is a community-wide plan that acknowledges the roles of different stakeholders in the creative sector, and as we exist in a complex creative ecology, we looked to the system of players within the creative sector itself to find solutions for its future. In the plan, we identified the various roles of these players and the parts they can play to drive our progress forward. Two committees met throughout the planning process, providing valuable guidance and feedback. The Steering Committee provided high-level guidance on the planning process itself and was composed of representation from seven councilmembers and the mayor's office, Minneapolis Arts Commission leadership, system partners such as staff from Minneapolis Public Schools, the Minneapolis Park Board, city staff, community leaders in the arts, and arts and culture funders. This group consisted of about 32 members. The second committee format took the form of workgroups comprising a larger group of stakeholders and consisted of city staff, system partners, for-profit and nonprofit arts and culture organizations, individual artists and creative practitioners. This group was a group of 110 members. Workgroup members brought relevant experience in the fields of placemaking, arts and the economy, artist support, and creative lifelong learning to the table. The workgroups began convening individually and then merged together to meet collectively as the work progressed. Finally, our work was grounded in the city's own strategic goals and objectives, specifically the one Minneapolis goal and the 2014 City Ordinance Defining Racial Equity and the Arts and Culture Program's commitment to authentic community engagement. The roadmap document was developed, as I mentioned, over an 18-month process implemented by a core team comprised of city staff, local artists, an urban designer, and research and data analysts. To this core team, we added more members throughout the process to fit specific work plan needs. Our artist engagement teams were core to our success. The two teams participated in the development of core research ideas, survey questions, and developed culturally appropriate strategies to engage and include the voices of underrepresented communities in the planned process. We gathered qualitative and quantitative information over a six-month period from community members in a variety of ways using a variety of methods. Initially, we used traditional data collecting methods well-known in the city, such as a survey tool, and outreach methods such as community open houses. We created a planning process website, designed and delivered a mobile-friendly digital survey to 4,000 email addresses, and placed ads with the survey link in public transportation. We also used creative methods to reach out to specific communities who we found were not responding to the city's methods. Two artist engagement teams were tasked to deploy targeted creative outreach to these communities. This way, we heard from people living across the city, even those not responding to the traditional methods of engagement. The above map displays the number of respondents from city zip codes, shows where artist teams were deployed, and where the city was effective in reaching survey respondents. The communities where the artists were most active included Cedar Riverside, Central, and Near North. This graph shows that 40% of artists' delivered surveys were filled out by people under the age of 24 compared to 8% of the surveys delivered online. Even though the online city's delivered surveys represented 69% of our respondents, the above graph shows that the majority of people who filled out the artists' delivered surveys were people of color. Only 15% of the surveys' respondents to us online city process were people of color. Extensive community engagement played an important role throughout our planning process, even after the data gathering period was over. It extended into data analysis through data jams or collective coding and analysis sessions. This image here shows one of our data jams. The public comment period through a traveling citywide exhibit, which is shown in this image, and look-back events to gather public input on the draft document itself. Additionally, we disaggregated our data with consultation from specialists in racial equity to better understand the perspectives and needs of different communities. So moving on to the contents of the document itself. One of our planned goals was to surface our creative identity and examine our strengths and challenges. As we have demonstrated through Creative Economy research, Minneapolis's creative sector is one of our greatest assets. Yet, this hotbed of activity also exhibits challenges. Racial inequities in creative sector employment mirror those of other sectors, and Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy has already presented to the council the scope and scale of these employment and wage disparities for creatives who are women and people of color. Our research also involved identifying potential growth areas in Minneapolis and addressed how arts and culture can offer ways towards economic growth. Policy Link has already studied regional racial, economic, and educational disparities, and this research also provided a guide for recommendations in this document. Like other sectors, we can confirm that the growth model for Minneapolis's creative sector requires racial equity, especially as regional demographic trends indicate continued population growth among immigrants and people of color. It is important that the creative sector recognize and act on these regional changing The final summation of our analysis and work is represented in the planned themes. These themes influence the creation of the planned vision and goal areas. We also identified priority objectives selected by members of our workgroups and a focus group of 101 arts and culture organizations. These priorities were identified as the most important starting point in achieving our collective vision. The visions for each goal were created from themes, as I've already mentioned, and developed through collective analysis of our survey data. We also added additional research to each of the goals to test and triangulate our findings. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we heard from the community and what that collective analysis consisted of. So across the city, the people access and learn about arts in very different ways. Understanding the impact of different modes of communication on the consumption of arts can help our creative stakeholders find audiences to grow. Audiences can't attend events they don't know about, and entire communities can be left without access to information. A supporting research included Meet Minneapolis and Tourism Studies, National Marketing Trends, and research on cultural audiences. The result was this vision, number one, amplify the local. The goal, diverse creative assets are developed, celebrated, and promoted. As shown in this graph, this goal should be developed in consideration that audiences of color rely more heavily on personal connections to get information on arts and cultural offerings than traditional communication methods. It is important that we do not contribute to the siloing of events and information. This priority area focuses on the need to develop a marketing platform that is comprehensive and engages audience through a variety of communication platforms. The city can act as a leader and convenor of this effort. What we heard was that people from diverse backgrounds and communities relate to the infrastructure and public spaces of Minneapolis in different ways, influencing how they access and consume art. Art creates place and offers opportunities for people and communities to express different relationships within Minneapolis and its infrastructure. This perspective was also reinforced by our focus groups. It led to vision number two, arts and culture connect people across differences. The goal, art is actively used to foster access and connections. This goal area focuses on art as a facilitator for building relationships and connections among different communities. This priority area was chosen by our workgroups to foster better connections between the arts communities and government. Relationships built through creative engagement can help communities better access and participate in civic processes. The Creative City Roadmap creative planning process demonstrates the effectiveness of this strategy, and the city has already developed the Creative City Making Program, just one example of this effort. It can continue to seek opportunities to leverage our creative engagement to continue to build relationships. What we heard was that inclusion and accessibility for artists of color depends on institutional actors understanding their basic needs as the starting point for policy interventions, living spaces, workspaces, et cetera. Basic needs must come first for these communities. Supporting information included Minneapolis Creative Index data, National Endowment for the Arts study, unemployment patterns among artists and artist workers, Cura studies, and McKnight Foundation research. As you see in this particular graph, we disaggregated the data so we could see differences from respondents in color and white respondents and what are their priority needs. So this led to vision number three, creative workers have the resources and opportunities they need to thrive. The goal, local artists and creative practitioners thrive with access to resources and opportunities. And we included two priority objectives for this area because our workgroups and focus group could not come to agreement on one. We added more detail to this goal area through our Minneapolis Creative Index 2014-2015 research and have already presented these recommendations to council. So we're really simply repeating those recommendations, and we will also seek to address affordable living solutions through the city's comp plan process. What we heard was that art must be seen as a viable method of community building, particularly as a way for communities to assert ownership and agency over their own physical spaces. The arts can create stakeholders. The city can help the creative economy grow by leveraging its position in different spheres as a regulator, a financial supporter, as a function of city planning, and so on. Organizing different arms of city government can compel other spheres of the community to organize around the creative sector. We see that coordination is needed. Supporting research included studies by Twin Cities LISC, Institute for Museum and Library Services, Historical Society Strategic Directions in 2015, National Endowment for the Arts White Paper on Creative Placemaking, and additional writing on placemaking and the politics of belonging. This led to vision number four, arts and culture are part of community development. And the goal, art and creativity strengthen economic and social development. This priority objective seeks to include a broader diversity of stakeholders in building on their creative economic assets. We recommend considering effective arts-based community development strategies to support neighborhood economic development through tools such as cultural corridors and other strategies. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to stand for questions, but before doing so, I'm going to concede the floor to take a moment to have some of the stakeholders and community members who are involved in the planning process speak in support of the planning process and document. I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to talk in support of this wonderful document and the process that we took to arrive at this roadmap. My name's Melinda Ledwizak. I'm the Ward Eight representative to the Minneapolis Arts Commission, and I also serve on the Executive Committee. I had the pleasure of being involved in the previous plan from 2005, the Minneapolis Plan for Arts and Culture. It was a very different time, and we were in the process of developing several large capital projects, the Minneapolis Central Library, the new Guthrie Theater, additions to the Walker and Mia, and plans for the new McPhail Center for Music and other projects out there. It was a very different time. But along with that planning and implementation with the city's public art coordinator, Mary Altman, under her direction, I had the pleasure of serving on a staff coordinating committee when I was with the former Minneapolis Public Library, which brought together the Park Board, the School District, the Minneapolis Arts Commission, Meet Minneapolis, and several city departments for the first time, looking at how we could work together across all those sectors. And we came up with a lot of new work and a lot of new relationships that set the stage for this kind of planning. What we lacked in that plan was looking at equity and diversity across our city, and I think we took that call and looked at that more closely as we went on this plan for 2016. Several former and current Minneapolis Arts Commission members served in various stages of this current roadmap planning and had a lot of good experiences with that. Recently, the Minneapolis Arts Commission convened a strategic planning retreat, and we are incorporating the goals of this roadmap in our work plan. We are creating our plan in parallel tracks that emphasize equity, connecting across differences, access to resources, engagement, and advocacy. And we look forward to working with Gilgun and Mary in creating our work plan and moving our work forward using this as our guidepost. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, council. My name is Leslie Palmer Ross, and I am the Art Director of Art Force based in the Northeast Minneapolis Arts District. Our business is based in Ward One. Art Force is a provider of artwork and artwork services. I'm here today to support the Creative City Roadmap. In my job, I have the daily opportunity to witness the profound positive impact the arts have on both practitioners and on viewers. I believe that it is critical that our city adopt a plan to integrate into the fabric of the city our vision to maintain, strengthen, and broaden our art community and our art economy. There is work to do. The president of our company and I were able to contribute both to the Creative Vitality Index and to serve on the workgroup teams for the Creative City Roadmap. The process was thoughtful and inclusive. Many of our company's initiatives are in alignment with the goals of the roadmap. Art Force provides a distribution channel for visual artists in Minneapolis and employs 22 people. We believe that we are the largest arts-based employer in Northeast Minneapolis. A few examples of the initiatives that fit with the goals of the plan. We recently created a free online collaborative learning community called Art Force Academy that offers business programming for artist entrepreneurs, a curriculum for those interested in being art consultants, and varied content about art topics for art enthusiasts, which should be everybody. We are developing a program with Edison High School to help demonstrate the options for careers in a creative field. And our Wings Program of art offerings provides artists who may be marginalized with a forum in which to sell their work. Being in the art business is not easy, but its contributions to society have significant value financially and intrinsically. Please join me in supporting the approval of the Creative City Roadmap to guide our community's creative life for years to come. Thank you.
Good morning. Buenos dias. My name is Alejandra Toadra Latris, and I work with Pangea World Theater in South Minneapolis. I'm also a Ward Nine resident. I am here today. I had the honor of participating in the process through committees, through data jams and dislination of the information. And I'm here not only to speak to the document as a well-designed and accessible document that I feel is really pertinent to my work as an artist, as a community organizer, as a nonprofit leader, and as a member of my community. The process itself was transparent, emergent, and it built capacity and it built community, which was an exciting and thrilling experience and one that, in relationship with all of this information, has really, I feel very humbled by the fact that we, as a theater, Pangea World Theater, in relationship to the work of the Creative City Roadmap process and relationship to the comprehensive city planning process, have been recognized nationally through Art Place Coalition of Funders, looking at this cross-sector tactics, techniques, and philosophy of creative placemaking and placekeeping. And then our town, with the National Endowment for the Arts, has acknowledged us as also being powerful allies in regards to engaging with community in ways that is present, accessible, and creative, and again, builds capacity and relationship. I'm very excited to, throughout the process, have made relationships that feel equitable. The focus on equity and diversity allow me to, again, as a nonprofit leader but as an independent artist, to feel myself a more powerful and enabled member of the economy, which is a little bit of a shift. One of the things that I found out throughout the process is that we did have a Creative Vitality Index before this year. However, it wasn't ever something that I felt in relationship to. Looking at the numbers of who's showing up in surveys in some of these indexes, I also come away from this process very energized to help us show up as communities, as communities of colors, as working-class communities, as immigrant, and others. Very excited again for the support of the council in relationship to the Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Department. I appreciate also descriptive titles. They help places in time. So I'm again honored to be here in front of you to share just a little bit of my testimony and my experience with the city process, that both in engagement and development and in planning feel cutting-edge in regards to where we can go as an empowered and united community. Proud to be a member of the city and engaged in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, I'm ready for questions.
All right. Do we have any questions from our councilmembers? Not seeing any. So on behalf of the council, I'd just like to say thank you for your work on this Creative City Roadmap and for your work supporting our creative economy and communities. So with that, I will move approval of the Creative City Roadmap report and direct staff to further the implementation of planned goals and objectives. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, I'll... Oh, Councilmember.
I just didn't want to pass without a little bit of comment because this is obviously an enormous amount of work, and it was a long process to get us here, and I'm really impressed with it. I think there's more here that I still have to dig into. But what is interesting is rather than talking about maybe the biggest projects like a sculpture garden or amazing theaters, this roadmap is focused more on the grassroots and how more people can have access to more art and more artists can expand the work that they're doing, and I really appreciated that. Also, looking at the goals and the visions, we're admitting that art can be used to help us accomplish other ends, like connecting diverse groups and building kind of our social capital, and I think that's really important. I think this could really be a good piece of information to also feed into, and I'm sure it's feeding into our comp plan and other work that we're doing. And so really appreciate the work and appreciate the focus. I also suspect that, and I think this was alluded to, something like this could really help us get funding and more resources to the city because we can demonstrate to people we are prepared, organized, we have a plan, and I think that's going to attract some funders. So I look forward to hearing more about how that works in the future.
So to your point, councilmember, we are actually a little ahead of the national conversation, both at the federal level and in other cities around this agenda. So we can see already funding resources align around creative sector workers and entrepreneurs and focused on racial equity within the creative sector itself. And we're tracking some legislation that's beginning to show up and talking to intergovernmental relations and councilmembers who might be interested in supporting that. But essentially, I feel like we're in great shape to be able to be active and responsive, whereas other cities are a little behind. They're still getting their planning processes together. So yes, to that point, yes, we will be able to be more competitive in that arena, but also not forgetting that our local artists should be brought into the sector and aligned with at least the national average in employment for artists of color in particular. So thank you very much for that comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Not seeing any other further questions. So with that, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. And the motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate the work. Now we'll move on to item number two, the Workplace Advisory Committee Resolution. Let me have our deputy city coordinator here.
Good morning. Noria Rivera Vandermei, Deputy City Coordinator. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to present for your consideration a resolution creating the formal Workplace Advisory Committee. We know that we've been here in June and talked about and provided our recommendations about that committee as that moved forward, and so hopefully I will keep this brief. It is in large part, and perhaps I should go back, that as this workplace partnership group was constituted and created in November of last year to discuss primarily the issue of sick leave, as we were thinking about that for municipal sick leave policy, there was an interest in a staff direction in May or earlier last year. was an interest in a staff direction in May or earlier this year, excuse me, to create a permanent advisory committee. We came forward with a recommendation in June of this year with a presentation on the components and what the staff direction should look like in terms of the charge that was largely approved on June 17th. And so we bring forward an enabling resolution that was required to make this a reality. By and large, the enabling resolution comports to the recommendations we brought forward in June with one small exception. As we constituted the groups, we had initially recommended a 15-voting member committee. A policy direction has asked that we add a representative, a public employee representative, and so now members stand at 16. Other than that, the charge of the group in terms of discussing and engaging the broader community of workers and business owners with the purpose of providing the city of Minneapolis with advice and recommendations relating to workplace initiatives put forward by policymakers and staff, providing recommendations for continued outreach and awareness building on existing and future workplace policy initiatives, monitoring and evaluating program implementation of existing and future workplace policy initiatives, and supporting successful implementation and providing recommendations and improvements on existing or future initiatives that could better serve business owners and workers alike remain the same, as does the requirement that this Workplace Advisory Committee prepare a two-year work plan that really commences with sick leave and certainly any other issues that may be coming down the pike that affect the workplace. With that, I am happy to stand for questions.
Any questions from council members? All right. I am not seeing any questions. So thank you for your work on this. With that, I will move a passage of resolution creating the Workplace Advisory Committee task with reviewing policies and advising policymakers on workplace-related issues. Any discussion? Council President Johnson.
I just want to mention, Mr. Chair, that Councilmember Reich wants to make sure that we include in the representation that's outlined in the action that a mid-sized business is represented, and I think that is important. You know, we are really careful to look for people in small business and then also large business. People have capacity, and they get involved in some of the, you know, ideas that are in work that's done in the city, but we'll do some outreach so that we make sure we include a mid-sized business person in the committee.
Great. Thank you for that. I think that's a good thing to note as well. Any additional discussion? Not seeing any. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And the motion carries. Thank you very much for your help, your work. We have a third item that has been postponed. This is the paid time off and sick time policies update. So we'll expect that at our next meeting. We'll move on to now our regular reports of the committees. And first up, Councilmember Goodman with Community Development and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. There are 11 items on our agenda for approval on Monday. Item number one is a land sale. It's a fairly major deal. It's the land sale for North Point Health and Wellness, the project that is partnering with the county and Thor, which is the corners of Penn and Plymouth. Item two, and three, and four are all of the liquor and business and gambling license issues. Five is some conditions on a massage and bodywork license. Six is a contract with Gimick. Seven is a rental license reinstatement. Eight is submitting our CAPR report to HUD. Item number nine is the 205 Park issuing exclusive development rights for a six-month period. Ten is a local approval from a state law change to allow a liquor license at 5,000 Hiwatha. And item number 11 is approving the 2017 license fee schedule. With that, I'll answer questions on items one through 11.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. We'll move on to the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Since the chair and vice chair are not here today, they're out on city business, I will give that report. We had one item at Intergovernmental Relations, a mediation settlement with Excel Energy on streetlight rates. Any questions on that? Not seeing any? Okay. Move on to the Transportation and Public Works Report. We have our vice chair, Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are 12 items move forward from TPW for consideration this Friday. The first is the choice of our authority for decisions related to the Wetland Conservation Act as it relates to several of our watershed areas. The second is a grant submission. Third is our Open Streets Agreement. Fourth is our final EIS comments for the Blue Line for light rail. Then we have a Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program funds application. We have pedestrian ramps and traffic signals to be constructed at 60th Street and Berks East Avenue. Stormwater contract amendments with wetland habitat restoration, our intelligent transportation system enhancement project, our riverside extension reconstruction project, signal upgrades for Third Street South and 46th Street East, the Streetcar Project Professional Services Contract Amendment, and the Streetcar Project Project Management Contract Amendment. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to our Ways and Means Committee Report with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. We've got 10 items on Ways and Means Report for your consideration Friday. The first is the appointment of Minneapolis Television Network Board members. We also have a contract amendment with Life Tech Training LLC for emergency medical personnel scheduling services, contract amendment with Robert Half International for financial reconciliation services, grant acceptance from Minnesota Department of Public Safety for youth violence prevention services. We have the Minnesota Green Corps Host Site Agreements with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Item number six, there are a series of contracts with Assessment Associates International, Curphy Leadership Solutions, and DRI Consulting for management, assessment, and related services. Item number seven is a contract with Select Account for Benefit Administration Services. Eight is a contract amendment with Hennepin County Medical Center for changes to the scope of services. We also have a contract amendment with Sierra Cedar, Inc. for ongoing ELM system, Elms System production and training. And the final item is a gift acceptance from the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, of equipment and supplies to our Minneapolis Animal Care and Control. Happy to answer any questions on those 10 items.
Not seeing any questions. Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. Lastly, we have the zoning and planning report, which I'll be delivering. We have three items as zoning and planning. One's a street vacation, two is a rezoning, and three is a zoning definition change amendment on half stories. Not seeing any questions. So with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.